Welcome to the April 15th, 2021, Parma City School District Board of Education meeting. Would everybody please stand to be pledged allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, in the nation and in the individual for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, Ms. D'Nusio.
This is Ross.
Present.
This is Carpus.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Present.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Thank you. Well, everybody, we're here. I'd like to welcome everybody back in the in-person meeting for the first time in quite a while. Let everybody know that the board remains committed to the health, safety, and welfare of its students and their parents, our staff, and our community. But even in these times, the board needs to take actions to keep the district operational and fully functional in the future. For these reasons, the board will conduct an in-person meeting tonight with limited seating due to the required three-foot social distancing. And we will livestream this meeting to the public in accordance with applicable law. Dr. Smilak, can you confirm that this meeting is currently being livestreamed?
We can.
Thank you. Can you please monitor livestreaming throughout the meeting? And if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed.
We will.
Thank you. With that, go to information before Dr. Smilak.
Thank you. It's great to be back in person. We hope that certainly we can maintain this status. As vaccines continue to proliferate, we would hope that there would be no disruption to this better routine. Just a few comments on issue 10. Hard to believe we're not within 20 days until voting begins or the actual election day. Voting priority. We will continue to make sure that people understand the importance of crossing of paths that we're at. We have two different paths that we can choose to go down as a school district or as communities. Paint and Patchway, where we just continue to do the best we can to keep our buildings functional. $167 million price tag. We will pay that in some way, shape, or form and really not get anything other than, as I said, paint and patches. We can keep them warm, safe, and dry, but we're not talking about new STEM labs, not talking about cutting-edge technology, we're talking about specifically making our buildings functional. On the other side, we have Worth It Way, and we think that our buildings are worth the investment. We think our children, our communities are worth the investment. We have a $300 million price tag for that, but $69 million will come to the state. So we will continue to educate our communities as much as possible. We're very appreciative of all the residents who have scuffed up, who have held block parties, who have passed out literature. Our staff has done a phenomenal job as well. And we continue to urge our public to educate themselves as much as possible. We have information certainly on our website, and we'll continue to distribute through all of our social media and look forward to what we hope will be a positive result on the board. With that, we will turn it over to our curriculum and instructions department. Our assistant superintendent, Miss Shopko, and Amy Zermet have some presentations about curriculum materials that we're very proud to have in front of you for adoption this evening.
Well, it is nice to be back. So today, we're going to talk about three things. This is the time of the year where we spend all year with our curriculum committees, and then we put forward our adoptions that are on rotation. So what you see tonight and what you will see tonight on what we are putting forward for your approval is our 11th through 12th English Language Arts. We've had, two years ago, adopted elementary. Last year, we did middle school up through ninth grade, and this is year three. So we will fully have new curriculum and materials and assessments in the hands of our teachers for use of our students all the way through. In addition, we're going to give you a preview of what we will provide all of our students for the summer school months. If they are not accessing our Summer Academy of Learning and Enrichment, all of our students will have access to a K-3A ELA math learning support system. And then I did a curriculum adoption for secondary arts and elementary arts. It was the Flex and the Pro. Here you will see our secondary materials that we are putting forward, and I want to preview what the plans are with changing some of our course schedules. District goals: increase student achievement, improve transparency, and practice physical responsibility. So you'll see all three goals throughout the presentation tonight. And again, a preview of what we're doing. Our last adoption for 11th and 12th ELA was 2013. We have had standards that have been updated for ODE. Obviously, we're always looking for authentic literacy practice, more engagement with our materials, and that link to college and career readiness. We need to have that comprehensive digital platform. This is missing currently, right now, in 11th and 12th grades, so that is something that our teachers will have. Again, Amy will go into detail about our K-3A ELA and math and learning support. And then the 9th through 12th, again, you adopted the Flex and the Pro curriculum. What you're going to see now is that connection to our 21st century learning, creating opportunities for digital integration. So that's the why behind what we do tonight. So every time we meet with our teachers, I feel like we continue to build those relationships. So I've had the pleasure of working with our art teachers since November, and our ODE standards are shifting from projects to process and problem solving, which is really exciting. And so I worked with every single secondary art teacher at the middle and high school level. They were all present. And here's some data. 1976 was the last time we changed our curriculum framework for art. That's a very long time ago. Another data point is 1997 is the year that I graduated from Bailey Forge, and the registration guide for art is exactly the same. So Mike Jayzak, he is on the committee. He started the year that all those changes were made. So to say that they were excited that we are on a rotation and that we are really working to integrate technology and our resources is an understatement. I did surveys, meetings, but the best part of this was one-on-one discussions. I went in every classroom and had conversations with our teachers. I toured all of our facilities and all of our materials. And the biggest thing is always to provide our students with experiences with 21st century learning, and we will do this through our fine arts courses. So this is what I'm asking you to adopt tonight, again, linking to our curriculum that we just adopted and our professional development. You will see on here, we went through a process where we looked at our standards and what are our basic needs. So all of our buildings, our programs at the secondary level, will have a Macbook Pro Part, like 30 Macbook books per building. We have Chromebooks right now, but to do specific software and to use that software, we really need the Macbooks. And one of the things that our students will be engaged with is the Photoshop suite included with our Macbook. So when our kids are graduating and our learners are going beyond high school and into the art track, Photoshop is a huge thing to have on that high school residence. So now our kids, if they choose not to go into Career and Tech, if they get this option, just the regular comprehensive fine arts program, they will be exposed to Photoshop. In addition, we have XP Pen graphic drawing tablets that link in directly to our Macbook. So with our new standards, we have digital pieces added to that. So our kids will be engaged in that digital drawing, so drawing on a piece of paper or making a painting and then transforming it into that digital piece. In addition, we have photography, and we have purchased a class set of digital cameras. We are using this to do more of literature-type-based art programming that you will see when we put forth our registration guide. So looking at not only taking that photography aspect, but creating children's books and doing some of that illustration so we can truly link the authentic literacy. In addition, each building was allotted the same amount of money for a specialized item. So Parma Senior High has decided that they want to purchase a laser cutter, Normandy High School of Kilm, and Bailey Forge High School of Makerspace. In our registration guide, we have art topics, so this aligns directly with that course. We want to align with our standards, but we also want our teachers to be creative. So they were really excited to problem solve this specialized item. So that is the art piece. We're going to shift over to the ELA for 11th and 12th. Amy worked extensively with teacher leaders from all buildings. This is our materials review process. We always look at every course. On every course, our materials that are linked to ODE. We request sample materials. We use the same rubric to evaluate standards with the materials. We invite our vendor in for district staff presentation. We added the DIS component where they practice and see how our technology platform works with the digital materials. And then there's a period of time where it's up for public review. We always have it in the lobby. We put it on our website, and there's always a direct link for comments from the community. And now today is our final recommendation. So this, these are our teachers, English III and English IV. We had representation from all three buildings, representation from our gifted lead teacher, our DIS tech corpsman, and Amy led that process. So I would like to turn it over to Amy so she can share the recommendation from our teachers.
As Ms. Shopko said, I have a ton of love working with our ELA. One thing that I learned, and now that we're kind of finishing off our whole realm of case and all this, is the passion that they are about giving kids books in hand and reading all kinds of authors. So the last round of the 11th and 12th, one thing that came to light was that how much they knew about the diverse authors and the ways they wanted kids to explore, see all kinds of literature, and exposed to that authentic literacy, reading, writing, and discussing. And when they went through the process, they really took all three of the companies we looked at, which was In the Literature, Studying Things, and My Perspectives. They put them through. They talked with each of those reps, and they talked through what kind of texts do they have, what kind of diverse authors do they have, what will you have my kids seeing in terms of text? And through it all, the one that stood out beyond measure was A to M's literature. And that may may sound familiar because we do have our K-8 teachers already using that same type of program, but different versions, because in 11th and 12th, you're talking deeper moral level texts. So in this case, we actually are even getting a more up-to-date version than even we adopted last year, because they've added even more texts, even more papers, and the kids are going to be able to see ongoing updates even more than we had last year. So the exciting part is it still has those focus standards. It still has those opportunities for kids to dive into text, respond to text, both digitally and in consumable, write-in text, so kids can have books in hand and annotate and write notes, but then also provides an additional thing of novels and things kids may not have access to in our library, or even they may not go to our library and read. So they're very excited about this recommendation. So once again, we're going to do, I'm going to talk next slide about some of the teachers. So like I talked about, those texts were one of the biggest things that our teachers were very focused, they wanted to make sure, met what they do in their classrooms and that they're not exposed to this unit. This has the write-in text, as well as all of the write-in text ability is able to be digitalized. Every type of thing that kids will be doing in a book can be done digitally. It connects it with the classroom. It connects with all of our tools. And like Ms. Shopko said, we've got our textbook practices and show study. And then the last thing is it really gave our teachers a guide to support all students. And one thing we also have been really working on is making sure that we are providing support and scaffolds for students who may need a little more support, but then bringing that gifted and higher achiever aspect, particularly the cannon, also pays attention to what is it having teachers do with our higher-level teams and their ability for text and things that are going to grow our high teachers. So all that being said, this is the great things that A to M continues to offer, and that they would like to offer to our others as well. We did a feedback, so we had multiple presentations. Our committee had presentations. They provided feedback multiple times. We also did something different this time because this was a product that already many of our teachers were using. We even sent out a survey to our already using product teachers. So they already said they value this product, they found stuff that's great things about it, and so this was another reason our committee felt like there was great people in this staff. So we did that. Another additional vendor presentation with 16 additional teachers attended. We also have material access, and out of all the students that attended and responded to our survey, 100% of the staff indoors also selecting this literature. We did have a community survey out there, but up to today, we did not have any feedback on the survey. So that's the 11th and 12th ELA adoption recommendation. The other side of the presentation is the exciting thing that I have to do is the previous presentation about our learning recovery plan and how we're going to continue to ensure that we're supporting all of our learners, not just students who may have had gaps due to anything related to COVID or anything related to how our instruction has kind of changed, tracking. In general, this is about making sure our kids, no matter if they're lower or higher or in the middle, are being provided enough opportunities for them to grow amongst this year and beyond. So the first column you're going to see is one really exciting piece that actually our K-5 math teachers found when we were reviewing for our math program. This is Davis Success Makers, and it is a digitalized, practical practice. You probably have seen lots of kids on many different practice studies and many different things that have either look like things or they might be practicing skills. This is a standard-based and engaging game-like system, but it's different in that it adapts exactly to where this path leads to go. So in this case, you're going to find a simple little initial placement, and then their path is created. On top of that, this has to be personalized and aligned to our K-5 math programs as well as additional programs that are out there so that if there are specific units or practice skills or even some of the standards that might be needed for students to practice with, the teacher can create a course-like path to have that student continue to practice and be with. I talked to other districts who use this, and they were blown away by how much their kids wanted to do it. And so we're going to be using this not only for access during the summer, so that kids can get on and practice throughout the summer, even if they're in summer school or not in the summer academy. But we're going to continue this and purchase this whole year for the next several years. So that is just a part of more so what we do, provide our students additional purposeful, adaptive practice for all level of students, not just intervention students. So that is one great thing we look for you. The other thing that we are doing is with our Summer Learning Academy, we wanted to make sure that our teachers and our students had evidence-based curriculum for summer school. So this is a program that has both print and digital materials. One key thing that we really liked about this is that it's real, it is sort of selective and has real text with it. It has real math materials with it. It has kids working in the lower level with hands-on, multi-sentence-type features for phonics instruction. So it's basically a shortened version of a more explicit curriculum that is going to benefit our kids during the summer academy, and it is something that we can use multiple summers. So it's not like this is one of them. And then the last thing is something that many of our schools already are using, but maybe not everybody had a chance to use it. It is Learning A to Z. Our special education department teachers, many of these teachers have utilized it, and it's a request we get often from our building principals. So it is a platform that basically has a variety of literacy, either strategy for teachers or resources for lessons, with an additional printable, affordable text, and access for kids to practice reading and review themselves and teachers can hear it. It's one that is really amazing for students and has gone around for a while, but now we're going to provide it hopefully for multiple years and for everyone. Thank you. So professional development obviously is always on our mind because we want to make sure we are supporting our teachers in initial implementation as well as ongoing. So your inter-literature is going to give you your normal getting started as well as ongoing professional development opportunities, virtual, and hopefully eventually in-person within the next several years to facilitate implementation. And then the additional other side for any of those things that we are providing for your learning support for right now or after summer, we're going to try to staff with that training as well as do learnation for students on how to use those platforms. And directing it up, we're talking about material costs. So our A to M's inter-literature is getting the same type of package that we found with most of our adoption. Our six-year adoption, like all of our other rotations, we are going to get print teacher editions, that's new, new label packs, give you access for everybody, and we're looking at $204,508.80. And that shows you also how we broke up 11th and 12th grade, and we are using our general fund to do this for this. The other side is kind of a different purchases that all come up from one cost. But the largest cost that you can see is that online success maker, because it is going to span all of our students kindergarten through eighth grade, and they are going to get access for ELA and math. The next one is your summer school curriculum, and then the last one is just that extra reading opportunity for our students' case school. And that's evolved, going to be funded through our effort that we were granted. Final considerations, really, it just goes back to that we want to help continue to improve student achievement. And to do that, we know we have to have a process in place to get curriculum in the hands of our teachers and then the opportunity for the students to have access to it. So we will continue to follow this process. We're going to continue to make sure that we're trained here and that the public has the opinion on the entire process and what we come up with. And then lastly, we are wanting to make sure that we can continue sustainability. So I always look to negotiate ways that we can make sure that our commitment continues beyond just, you know, what we were looking at this year ago. And that is what we are recommending tonight.
Excellent.
Thank you so much. There's a lot of info for period time.
I like, anytime you can get a, find a product and even get a kid interested in reading, I think that's outstanding. From the phrase that you said earlier, it sounds like this might be the deal that would work. So thank you for finding it and sharing it with us, Ron. I appreciate that.
I like the whole rotation and finally art's in it. Hey, that's 1976? Wow. I'm glad they're in it, and like I said, I like the whole rotation, continue on. Things change a lot as we move through the years, and keeping up with them and keeping up with the changes in the technology, I think is vital for the kids. Good job.
How do we track down 1976?
Mike Jayzak.
Yep.
So yesterday, I was with, I was with middle school today, high school yesterday, and I was talking about how it was the same registration guide from when I graduated, just the art part, not the rest. And he was like, I'll go a step further with you, Tiffany. So he said the only thing that really was adding was the topics of art. So yeah, it's definitely a big purchase.
You know, I also think it really is also a compliment to our art teachers who have clearly had to try to be innovative without a whole lot of support from us. And really have, I think, done a good job. I mean, they have been engaging, they have been creative, but it's also a compliment to me to say we have to get these people some better resources to actually enter, I don't know, 1994 at least. So thank you for all of your work.
That'd be a pretty good increase right there.
I do have one quick question. The classic, the Bell Xcel. So I know that'll be the summer school curriculum. Are any of those resources going to be available to any student in the district? Or is that specifically going to be for the kids?
So there's different parts to it. There are parts that probably can cause the way the school is implemented over too. We could utilize some of it during like our intervention time or if you wanted to do like our high time with the elementary. So there are parts, but truly it's the way that it's created is more that timeline on this summer school. So it would be, yes, a lot of the resources could be used, but if you wanted to just take it, how would you?
And the write-in text, we have several younger kids, and the write-in text is phenomenal. Like they dog ear it. I have the last, like all their reading books, we keep them because that's like their practice thing. But Scarlett particularly will highlight words that she's not truly under, like she doesn't understand the full context of it, and we'll bring it home and like look it up on her phone. And I think that that's important because then she can understand where they're going later on. But just for them to be able to like highlight circles, it's their own, they own it. And you mean, you guys know this, but some versus don't own books. So this is, even if that's the only book they own, it's got such a plethora of literature. I'm excited about all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smilak. Communications this evening, Mrs. Carpus?
The only thing I really have, and I think everybody's kind of aware of it, is the students that reached out in regards to the holiday, you know, the tour. And one of the young ladies we're going to be talking to tomorrow to hopefully get her in and raise all committee at the school level and see what else we can do to kind of work within the framework of everything we have going on in the school district right now, because I think there's some excellent outlets for her. But I know we have some more context about that later, so.
Yeah, we will have.
That's really all I have.
Well, thank you. Anything else? Treasure?
Yes. The auditorium state approved our independent audit that was conducted by RISD, which is on Monday. It's not been released onto the website, but it's been officially approved by them. They just have to, they released reports on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and it wasn't there today. Could be there Tuesday, hopefully. But as I talked about a month ago, we got an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. We had no citations or significant deficiencies, and there's no management letter. So it's a pretty, pretty good audit report. Also, they institute something called Stars System, where they grade us based on your transparency. And if there's seven categories, if you get five out of seven, you get four stars. Do the public records, are your reports available online, or is the agenda online or minutes online? And so we got four stars, and that's a lot of the mainly thanks to Pam, because she controls a lot of the public records. So we're pretty good on it.
And what's the most stars we can get?
Four.
We got?
We got four.
How many dings did we get in the report?
All seven.
None? No, no, not dings.
No ding. How many?
Oh, dings, none.
The no dings and highest out of highest.
Seven out of seven.
And was it? Is this an independent audit?
It's an independent audit.
It was an independent audit.
By RISD Associates.
Yeah, so can I, can I just sort of elaborate a little bit?
It's amazing.
The, the management letter is simply a recommendation of best practices. So, you know, the audit itself, there's substantive findings, and those are being half the fix. And then there's a management letter that says, you know, you could probably do this too. This is my fifth audit as superintendent. Never before have I heard of any audit not having a management letter. And that means that they, that's like taking a look at a course of study and saying, I can't even make any specific recommendations. I mean, that is unheard of, and it really is a great compliment to you, also to our board, also to our senior leadership team and our principals. I mean, you know, Sean can do whatever he wants, other people have to buy into that too, where we, you know, we have serious issues. too, where we, you know, we have serious issues. So it really is a testimony to the district working together on that fiscal responsibility. But ultimately, Sean, you need that and it's, congratulations. I've never heard of no management letter. That's just phenomenal.
Makes you laugh for me, Emma.
Congratulations. Really, it's great. Good job. Good job. You almost feel like standing up to one of these. That is amazing. I mean, I've been around this game for a long, 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 long time and we'll just leave it with what Charlie said, just absolutely amazing. Congratulations to all because you're right, it's a team effort, you know, doesn't take, I mean, one person can lead the charge, but it takes a team to pull that off. Extremely well done. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other communication this evening? Any amendments this evening?
No amendments.
I need to lick my fingers. Public participation?
How do you get agenda items?
Only any agenda items. We have any of that this evening.
No, not any agenda items.
None of those.
Or not really, not really. No, no amendments, no.
Yeah.
We're good.
I move to then adopt Resolution 2021-04137, approval of the written record of proceedings to the March 25th, 24th. We don't want to say March 25th, 2014, do we?
2021.
2021.
2021, I have 2021.
Regular and special Board of Education meeting.
Second.
I have a motion in the second without Resolution 2021-04137. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-04137 has been approved. Moves us to curriculum. Mr. Vaughn?
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to make, uh, move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-138, approval overnight out of state field trips.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04138. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04138 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-139, approval of K through eight English, language, arts, math, and social studies emotional learning summer curriculum material.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04139. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04139 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-140, approval of K through eight English, language, arts, and math learning software.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04140. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04140 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-141, authorizing purchase of 3D printer.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04141. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04141 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-142, authorizing purchase of Apple MacBooks.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04142. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04142 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-143, authorizing purchase of digital cameras.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04143. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04143 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-144, authorizing purchase of laser engraver.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04144. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04144 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-145, authorizing purchase of XP graphic drawing tables.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04145. Questions or comments?
Did you say tables or tablets?
I was gonna read tablets.
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 Oh, sorry, I missed.
That's okay.
It is tablets, but I should have read tablets and I read tables.
That's okay. I mean, you're hungry.
I forgive you. Sorry.
We have a motion in the second, right?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04145 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-146, the approval of grade 11, 12, language arts adoption.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04146. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04146 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes curriculum for this evening.
Thank you very much and again, thank you to the curriculum department. Everything's just been approved. We can now move forward. Yay. Mr. Price, business?
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-147, authorizing renewal of facilities usage agreement between the City of Parma School District, School District Board of Education and University Settlement, Inc.
Second.
I have a motion in the second for Resolution 2021-04147. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you.
This is collapse.
It is, okay. Just under the difference.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I thought that was mine too.
Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04147 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Price, but right back at you with finance.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-148, approval of the March 2020 financial report.
Second. We have a motion in the.
Should that be 2021?
Yes.
Yes, 2021.
2021 financial, excuse me.
I'll send that for the 2021.
Good catch.
We are still out of practice.
I had the one that said 2014. 20, the Resolution 2021-04148 has been moved in second. Any questions or comments?
I just want to thank Sean for, I mean, as always, with this super comprehensive report for us to stay on top of everything and it leaves very little room for miscommunication for us.
I try to simplify it so the average reader can understand it.
That's good for me.
I was just going to say that.
That's probably good for all of us except for Jack.
It's too complex.
Easy to understand.
It's too complex. It's too big of a, but.
Right.
That's something I noticed right away coming on how user-friendly you made these financial communications.
Yeah, that's a better word, user-friendly.
Well.
Yeah.
That's very good.
All right.
I don't know, you guys get a big hit tonight.
Let's run a roll call then.
All right. Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04148 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-149, ratification of investments.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04149. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04149 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-150, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04150. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04150 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-151, authorization to accept activity purpose statement.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04151. Questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04151 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-152, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second. I have a motion in the second for 2021-04152. Questions or comments?
As usual, I'd thank the community for their kind of thoughtfulness of remembering Parma City School District with their donations. The anonymous ones, am I in this? That's a lot of money.
It's huge.
They donate and to the Council of Mary, that's awesome. Three is the water bottles are all the rage and are important to the health and safety right now. We thank, so we don't, I guess, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, that's where the monetary, we use the family to God pay for tuition, that's beautiful. Thank you very much.
That's lovely.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nucio?
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04152 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price. Is there a legislative report this evening, Mrs. Carpus or Mr. Brodts?
There is. Dr. Smilak has been wonderful about sending us legislative updates about what's happening, kind of, and that kind of thing, so just going to briefly highlight Hospital 10, or 110, I'm sorry, and it combines a multitude of things, the Fair Funding Plan, some of the tax relief, the COVID-19 relief grants, and some government, like oversight and accountability. And the K through 12 piece, I'm just going to read this little piece of it. The Fair School Funding Plan is a historic initiative that is the result of educators and policymakers working for more than three years towards a common goal, improving education for Ohio students. This will be phased in over six years, beginning with the 21, 2021-22 school year. It is designed to ensure no school district loses funding during the transition to a new formula. The plan reduces duplicative, duplicative operational city, of cities in Ohio's education funding model. By maintaining the governor's proposed student wellness and success funding that encompasses that much more needed support within the new formula, no school district loses any funding during the phase in, is there a short-term transitional payment included in the implementation. Joint vocational schools will also receive transitional funding, and community schools will receive an accelerated phase in for disadvantaged people in past states. However, some community schools may show a reduction due to projected student count shifts that occurred during this pandemic. It outlines several different things included, including it's going to require a college Credit Plus program, the Department of Education, higher education jointly develop a permission slip regarding potential for mature subject matter in courses. It's going to require school districts and charter non-public high schools to inform students, grade six through eight, six through 11 of advanced standard programs annually, requires school districts to spend the gifted funds that receive the new school funding formula on the identification of gifted, gifted coordinator services, gifted intervention specialist services and other service providers adopted. The Department of Education appropriates 2.5 million in each fiscal year to supplement payments for the dropout prevention and recovery. E-schools participating in the pilot program increases the college Credit Plus program by a million dollars to support home school students. There's a lot of different things happening in this bill.
Some of it.
Yes, and it's kind of all these things converging into one space, so it's going to be very interesting to watch. So I strongly encourage anyone following Mr. Stephen Iann.
If I can just add, and if you create summary, this is largely the recreation of Hospital 305, which is the Patterson Bill, and under that bill, we stood to gain 8.33 million per year, so it's certainly a help to us. And we're always, anytime we hear school funding fix, while certainly we want a better formula, we also get nervous because 8.33 million is really great, but over a course of time, we're still going to run into a point where we need an operating level. And our fear is always without a very significant fix. You know, the public fear is, well, if they fix school funding, we never have to vote yes on a levy again. And that's not, this would help, but when we look out to 2025 and see a $25 million deficit, I mean, that's going to almost close it, right? But you've still got some need. So it's, it's very complex. We're appreciative of the work that Columbus is doing to improve, but we also have to be honest with our communities in that improvement does not equal perfection to the point of not being properly classified.
Right. Point. Very, very important. Mrs. Brodts, do you have anything?
No, just thank you also to Dr. Smiley for providing us with a lot of information about the legislative activity that he's been exposed to. So it sounds great, but this is very complex. There's a whole lot of stuff in this bill. The bill, as I read it, it's really a lot. I'm hopeful that we get anywhere near the eight.
Well, and interestingly enough, they tagged in, right, the tax cut.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's sort of a carrot for what is it, conservative legislation right now. But now the Senate, and the Senate all along has been really the watchdog in terms of how does this really work in the country.
Right.
So thank you to the House for their work, but now let's see how your big brothers and sisters in the Senate proceed with this.
Mr. Schweitzer, before we continue.
Yes.
I have to step away because my motherly duties are calling tonight. So Mr. Vaughn is going to take over the policy for me.
Okay. Fully noted, thank you very much.
Thank you. How good evening, everybody.
If everything works out.
Thank you.
Happy birthday to Haley.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
She said three separate teachers saying to her today.
That moves us to Human Resources. Mrs. Brodts?
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-04-153, Approval of the Following Certificated Exhibits, Confirmation of Stipend amounts, Confirmation of Substitute Teacher Appointments, Approval of Certified Non-Compensated Leaves of Absence, and Confirmation of Subtle Mental Appointments.
Second. We have a motion second for 2021-04-153. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-04-153 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-04-154, Recommendation for Continuing Plan Trek.
Second. We have a motion second for 2021-04-154. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04-154 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-04-155, Acceptance of Certified Retirement.
Second. We have a motion second for 2021-04-155. Questions or comments?
Who is that? That's Deb Hondo, my counselor at Normandy.
Yeah.
She was with the, with her for a lot of years.
Still alive.
She was there about 20 years.
Sorry, still alive, you asked.
She wasn't going to say.
Point of click, yeah. And I'll shout out for that to me.
Don't forget that tip for waitress.
Oh, my God. Any other questions or comments?
Charlie Holder.
Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-04-155 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-156, Creation of Extended School Year, E.S.Y., Coordinator Position, and Adoption of Job Description.
Second. We have a motion second for 2021-04-156. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-04-156 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-04-157, Approval of Following Classified Exhibits, Confirmation of Classified Appointments Replacements, Confirmation of Change of Classified Assignments, Approval of Classified Non-Compensated Leaves of Absence, and Confirmation of Classified Resignation.
Second. We have a motion second for 2021-04-157. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
I do have, I do have a quick comment. Are we going to talk about Mr. Caputo there?
Certainly.
That's certainly a loss to our.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you know, transportation is really an often overlooked function of a school district in terms of how many logistics go into managing the transportation of probably 4500 students in our district. And I hate to say this because I don't want it to sound too simplistic, but probably the best compliment to Angelo is that we hear almost nothing about transportation. And that's not easily done when you manage over 100 buses, over 100 bus drivers, over six or seven mechanics, and do so in a way that is extremely self-sufficient. You know, there are mornings where Angelo's given a bus, has been driving and taking routes himself, after school is the same. It's only getting more difficult to fill spots, driver's spots, and that's not unique to Parma, that's many school districts right now. And so that just continues to really force our administration to be more and more creative. And so the level of service that Angelo has provided in the two and a half years since he's come back to us and in those years before he left for some time have just been exemplary. And I think you don't know that until you don't have it, kind of like the right guard in an offensive line, you know? When that guard goes down and something can't block, where the quarterback's getting sacked all the time. Angelo's been phenomenal. He has a phenomenal career opportunity in front of him. He will manage as a vice president, a private transportation provider in Pennsylvania, where his mother lives. He will essentially be in charge of six Anglos that will all report to him. And so he'll continue to make, you know, an impact on children through the provision of efficient service. We will miss him, and we hope to be able to attain someone of his quality to be able to put in the next year. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree.
Actually, that's a big loss.
That is a big loss for us. I can remember meeting Angelo when he first came to the district, and we served on the Facilities Committee together. And I was always impressed with his knowledge and contributions and kind of wide vision and creative vision, thinking about problem solving, and really thought he was such a good fit for us. I'm so disappointed to see him go. Wish him well, certainly.
It's almost, there's a bit of deja vu here, as you mentioned, you don't know what you have till they're gone. And we learned that once. And hopefully, we're not going to learn it again as a replacement. Hopefully, we will move forward. But congratulations to Angelo. He deserved it. Any other questions, comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04-157 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-04-158, Acceptance of Classified Retirement.
Second. Motion second for 2021-04-158. Questions or comments on the board? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-04-158 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2021-04-159, Confirmation of Classified Appointment.
Second. We have a motion second for 2021-04-159. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04-159 has been approved.
I do have one question, Dr. Smiley, is when will Mr. Caputo be finished?
Uh, not until mid-June.
Oh, okay, so.
We've actually already posted the position, so he will help with the transition.
Okay, great. I didn't see that exact date. Thank you. Well, unless there are any other comments or questions by board members, that concludes Human Resources for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Brodts. Policies this evening? And Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, sir, we have quite a few policy changes today. I do want to make note that they are mostly inert changes, grammatical errors, that kind of thing from the Ola and this improvement in terminology overall. So with that being said, I will start this off. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-160, Approval of Revised Policy 1422, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity.
Second.
Just forgot it.
Gotcha, okay.
I'll do that to Mr. Price.
Yeah, it's, just didn't want to.
No, I know.
You're hanging out there.
Yeah, so we forgot it.
Resolution 2021-04-160, motion and second. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04-160 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-161, Approval of Revised Policy 3122, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity.
Second. We have a motion and second. Any questions or comments on the board? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04-161 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-162, Approval of Revised Policy 4122, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity.
Second. Motion and second for 2021-04-162. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04-162 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-163, Approval of Revised Policy 6144, Inductance.
Second. We have a motion second for 2021-04-163. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Yes.
I beat you, didn't I?
You did. My old spirit's coming off the line. Simultaneously.
Speed it up, man.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Yes, 2021-04-163 has been approved.
Sean, you gotta speed it up there, buddy. I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-164, Approval of Revised Policy 6152, Student Fees, Fines, and Charges.
Second. Motion and second for 2021-04-164. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04-164 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-165, Approval of Revised Policy 6220, Tax Budget Preparation.
Second. Motion and second for 2021-04-165. Questions or comments on the board? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04-165 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-166, Approval of Revised Policy 6325, Procurement of Federal Transfunds.
Second. Motion and second for 2021-04-166. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04-166 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-167, Approval of Revised Policy 8450.01, Protect Facial Covering During Pandemic Epidemic.
Second. We have a motion and second for 2021-04-167. Any questions or comments? That's not revising an old one.
No, that's, that's a new one.
Yeah.
It says revised.
Well, they probably had something before that didn't actually have to take place. Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes, 2021-04-167 has been approved.
Unless anyone else has something to discuss the policy, this concludes policy.
Thank you very much. Any other, any other information requested by board members this evening? Seeing none, this is the opportunity to have questions and concerns run into the record, and I believe we have 12 this evening, correct? And I will read these verbatim, their email mostly. So the letters are small, bear with me. Oh, okay. So is that 13?
Yes.
We now have 13. Okay, I will do my best. First one. The first is from Allison Mendoza, 6609 Thorough Park, Thorough Drive, Parma, Ohio, 44129. Hi, I'm currently a junior at Normandy High School, and I had a question I wanted to put forward to the board. Why are we unable to cancel school on Eid al-Fitr to accommodate our Muslim students? Our student calendar already accommodates Christian holidays, sometimes with week-long breaks in the case of Christmas. So there's no reason we can't cancel one day of school to accommodate Muslim students in the same way. I encourage you to seek out and listen to Muslim voices before reaching a decision on this. Thank you, Allison Mendoza. Next is from Mai, it's M-A-I, Mostafa, 5943 Pearl Road. Regarding the petition signed by many students and parents in the Parma City School District requesting Eid al-Fitr be a day off for students, why is it that you feel as though you can't change the schedule to accommodate student needs when you've shown all throughout the year that you can change dates that were set in place if you so chose, such as commencement? You clearly can change the date to accommodate students who merely want to celebrate their holiday without stress, the same way Christians in the district are able to do during their winter and spring breaks, even if it is a coincidence that Christmas and Easter fall into those breaks. It's unfair that Christians get weeks to spend celebrating, and yet you can't find it in yourself. Have a simple vote, give us Muslim students one day. Thank you for your time. This one's tiny. Sorry. Zainab Al Thaheer, A-L hyphen T-H-T-A-H-E-R, by Ashton, I'm sorry, at 6528 Kingsdale Boulevard, Parma Heights, Ohio. My name is Zainab Al Thaheer. I am a junior at Valley Forge High School. I had a couple of questions regarding Eid al-Fitr. I was curious as to why all year we are able to constantly make sudden changes to the school's calendar, but all of a sudden, school cannot be called off in Eid al-Fitr. It is very important holiday for us Muslim students. I do not think that it is fair that the Parma City School District accommodates Christian holidays and not others. Personally, I feel like the board could cancel school on Eid al-Fitr, but they are, they are no, because it would be inconvenient for them to actually do it. Olivia Grimes Clark, 6467 Lawnwood, Parma Heights. I'll find it. I'd like to contextualize my question with the events of the past school year. No schedule has been permanent for very long. All students and teachers have been left ill-advised on what will happen going forward and left in utter chaos, and that's left many well-performing students in rough spots academically. To put it simply, the schedule in the district has been nothing short of adaptable, to put it mildly. My question is then this, why in a school year that has been riddled with sweeping schedule changes, has the district decided to do it, deny at request by petition, one with the backing of 2,000, to provide students of the district a day off in Eid al-Fitr, a prominent holiday? Would very much appreciate an explanation and clarification beyond it's hard to change the schedule. Because while that may be correct, it's alienating a substantial group, the student body, that who either is actively Muslim or whose family is Muslim, while also outright ignoring a demand of the student body after they have been put through nothing short of a hill during the school year and last. Thank you for your reading. Passes her foggy, hold on. Am I able to take this off to read?
Absolutely.
I think. Okay, this is from Zainab Asi, 6907 Revere, Parma Heights. Why must we be required to come to school on a religious holiday to Muslims? Why does the school system only focus on Christian holidays? Why can't Muslims have one day off for Eid Eid, you know, short, I guess, Eid al-Fitr, which is something special to us? This is from Sanibel Wieland, 7559 Pleasant Hill Drive, Parma. If we get two weeks off around Christmas time, a Christian holiday, why can't we take off one day to celebrate Eid al-Fitr, a Muslim holiday? Is this from Sanibel? It's from the same person, 7959. The one, this second one says, why do we only accommodate Christian holidays when we also have a large percentage of Muslim students, slightly more? Another from Sanibel Wieland, from 7559 Pleasant Hill Drive. Why must Muslim students continue to have to choose between missing schoolwork or celebrating a holiday? This is from Usaba Beach, 7568 York Road, Parma, Ohio. The Parma School Board just had a quick question. Why do you favor Christian holidays over any other holiday? You have no problem giving out two-week Christmas break, Christmas, Christmas break, wait, I'm so sorry, let me rephrase that, winter break, but can't give one day for the fellow Muslims who fasted 30 days. Funny, we ask for one day, and you can't give it that to us. However, you can give two-week Christmas break, one-week Thanksgiving break. We can celebrate Halloween, Valentine's Day, all of them at school since we've been in elementary school, but can't do nothing for the Muslims, brothers and sisters. Thank you, Parma. Next one is from Madeline Class, 9383 Lynn Haven Road, Parma Heights. Hello, I am submitting this comment for the school board meeting tomorrow. Submitted yesterday. With all due respect, I think it is an absolute outrage that Muslim students cannot have the day off for Eid al-Fitr. I noticed that our principal says that any Muslim student can be excused for their holiday, but being excused from school is not what they are asking for. They are asking for academic relief and to be treated like their holiday matters, as Christian holidays do. From growing up, I remember being so relieved to spend Christmas and Easter with my family not having any schoolwork to do. Not only do Muslim students have to miss a day, but they also have to make up whatever they missed when they come back. One day of makeup work might not seem like a lot, but it really is. I think they'd like to feel the relief that all Christians did growing up, to be able to feel the relief that all Christians did growing up, to be able to spend their holiday at home without schoolwork in the back of their mind. I also find it ridiculous how the calendar cannot be changed until 2022-2023, considering how much it has changed just this year. We've gone from remote learning, hybrid learning, in-person throughout this year, and many changes were made. I find it very hard to believe that one day cannot be taken off in honor of Muslim holidays. I thought schools were supposed to encourage equality and equal opportunities. This is from Nicholas Gemelas, G-E-M-E-L-A-S, 10224 North Church Drive, Parma Heights. Eid al-Fitr is the most important holiday in the Islamic calendar. This is the only day when Muslim brothers and sisters can celebrate the end of Ramadan and when the Muslim community unites to celebrate the end of a fasting period. Why is that we have days off only for Christian holidays? Why was there never a day off on Eid al-Fitr? Islam is the second largest religion in the world, and yet the school district still continue to ignore the most celebrated holiday in the Islamic calendar. Eid is a time to celebrate with your family, bring peace to the table, donate to the needy, and most of all, thank Allah for all the blessings. All we ask is one day off for Eid al-Fitr. How hard can that be? One day off will not ruin the whole schedule, and if you continue to say it does, then we most certainly know that the school district is ignoring us. Please give us the day we need to spend time with our family and friends. Thank you, and may Allah bless you. This is from Vera Brunner, 6451 Kearney Wood Road, Parma. It is outrageous that we can have off for every Christian holiday, but not a single holiday for any other religion. I am so angered at the fact that the school refuses to make a simple adjustment to our fancy little schedule for something that is completely necessary. Just because it isn't important to you doesn't mean it doesn't matter. Christian opinions shouldn't be above anybody else's. There's a single day for you all to take off, and if you refuse to make this official, please at least use a calamity day, as we have many, many left. It is so offensive of you all to dismiss anything that wasn't made specifically for white people. Simply outrageous. If you won't listen to the minorities contacting you, here I am using my voice so that someone will listen. Vera Brunner, Valley Forge High School. This is Mia Brunner, 6451 Kearney Wood Road. If I can't even one day of school be canceled for Muslim students, why are accommodations only made for Christian holidays? There was 13 communications in all. I've read the verbatim. Thank you to all those who wrote in with the concern. Certainly understand where you're coming from. Do we have a response to that this evening?
Certainly.
This is my life.
Yeah. And I always appreciate, especially when students take the time to address concerns in a very formal manner, very respectful manner, and it shows a lot about their character and how they're becoming, you know, active citizens. So I'm appreciative of that. At first, I want to address flexibility with schedule. You know, typically, we don't schedule as much as we did this year. We moved schedules this year largely because of, actually exclusively because of COVID and the concerns that COVID presented. Typically, a calendar is adopted by at least mid-January of the previous year for the next school year. That's what we've done in the case of the 2021-22 school year. So specifically in terms of some of the concerns about, you know, how calendars are so just able to be changed on a dime's notice. This year, that was unique to COVID, and we wouldn't normally do that. Secondly, I want to address the fact that this is a difficult proposition for any school district, any business. We have a very wide number of religions, and we look at across 9,300 students. You're going to come across many different nationalities, many different religions, especially in urban areas of Parma. And so the point is well-taken in that our calendar does largely honor a Christian paradigm, especially specifically to, you know, with Friday and the day after Easter. But I would say that there are many different religions, and we need to be cognizant of the fact that giving all religious holidays off would really open us up to a wide number of days that we wouldn't be having school. So it is difficult to just say, well, you know, we'll honor that. I mean, you're Jewish, you have Orthodox Christians, and Orthodox Christians have in the past made questions to me about, you know, can we honor their calendars better? I will say that what these students have brought does show the need for more inclusion of more voices into the school calendar committee. In all honesty, I've led the school calendar process since I've been here. For the most part, we have almost cut and paste last year's calendar, adjust the dates, and roll it out, maybe have a couple different versions that teachers wrote on, and that's what we do. And what these students have done tonight is to show the need to be more inclusive of a wider range of voices into that process. And so with that in mind, I'm going to take those 13 emails, and I think Mr. Barkowski sent those to us this morning, and I will happily meet with the folks that sent in to learn more myself. In all honesty, until these, this string of emails came in, I was relatively ignorant of the importance of this date. And so I would like to learn more myself. Now, please understand that does not commit to anything in terms of change. I do not foresee a circumstance under which we would change the calendar this year, especially given the nature of finals coming up, senior finals coming up in May. And high school is one of the most demanding months of any organization in our society. And so we will not change, you know, the calendar this year at this point. However, I do want to hear more from this group of students, specifically these people that sent in these concerns. But I also want that to mobilize in the future a more inclusive approach to building school calendars.
Thank you, Dr. Smiley, for that response. I think I agree. The word that came to my mind as I read through these today was awareness. And I think that's what you were referring to. Sometimes somebody just has to shake you a little bit, make you aware, you know, of something that maybe you weren't, you know, considering strongly before. And I agree that, you know, it went to a point in the school year where I don't think that can happen. But I would like to also volunteer, if you have that meeting, I would be willing to attend that as well, because I'm always interested in learning. I think I could learn something from that, and maybe there's something that could be done as we move into the future.
So, yeah, and I appreciate your presence and your offer. And so I will develop a day to be in contact with these folks that send emails.
Thank you.
Is there, have you, have any of our neighboring school systems done anything for this holiday?
Not to my knowledge, but it should be part of our research.
Yeah, I was thinking like North Olmsted, I know, has a higher population. So I was wondering if they did something specific for students or not.
The one piece I want to point out, too, though, you know, we do have a religious observance, you know, excuse or perhaps. But there isn't a punishment. I understand that, you know, that's, they recognize that.
So that's not what they were asking for.
And they still have to, yeah, they still have to make up. And I just wanted to clarify that it is an excuse.
Yes. Correct. Any other questions, comments, regarding the things ready for the record? Seeing none, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-04-169 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2021-04-169. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusio?
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer. Well, I already said Mr. Schweitzer, I'm sorry.
Bratz.
Mrs. Bratz.
I was gonna scan here. Yes.
Resolution 2021-04-169 has been approved. This meeting is adjourned.